And we'll go ahead and call the Tuesday, March 8th, 2022 regular board meeting held virtually via Zoom and phone to order. I'll go ahead and do roll call. District One Representative Hoover, Director Hoover is out. Director Bowlerjack?
Here.
And I am here. Director Apoa Ryder, Director Morris?
Here.
Director Larson?
Here.
All right. So apparently I was. I was on mute. So I don't know where I left, where people heard me leave off.
With roll call.
Okay. So did everyone? I didn't hear who, who was present. So do we get through roll call? And I think then I welcomed guests, so just welcome to guests. And then on the next section is the community agreements and a statement from Director Bowlerjack.
Thank you. Yes, our agreements that comes from the Courageous Conversation book. We agree to stay engaged. We agree to experience discomfort and be vulnerable. We agree to speak our truth and expect and accept non-closure. I would like to read a personal statement before all of you. I, I am very nervous reading this, so. Please bear with me. Dear friends and colleagues, it's with deep regret that I respond to the hurts, to the reports of hurt that I caused to others in the district and community with my statement on February 8th, 2022. It was not my intent to do harm, but I understand that the impact was felt in a way not intended. I spent many hours in thoughtful reflection by myself and with others to understand how my words caused harm. I hear the concern that my absence at the last board meeting also raised. Unfortunately, the statement I gave to the board was not read, and so you only got silence from me, and I'm sorry for that. I can assure you, I have read the public comments and spent time reflecting on them. I want to thank the Foster High School, Black Student Union, the staff, Black staff, Asian Pacific Islander staff, Latinx and Chicanx staff. I want to thank the Thorne Dyke Race and Equity Leaders, Angela Meyer and Catrice Cyphers for their guidance for growth and their deep love for our community. In several of the letters, it was asked why I told the story I did. My intent was to honor and highlight a child that changed my life, just as so many others spoke that night of those who had changed their lives. I find sometimes that we can't give names to our heroes and sheros. They appear and disappear in our lives in very fleeting ways. This one was a black hero for me. For me, running into her was not a moment of colorblindness, but rather a busting up of the paradigm of my environment where demeaning language and offensive treatment of all Black and Brown bodies was an expectation. I immediately, even at six years old, began correcting my parents for the language they would use and the way they would speak about different neighborhoods in our own town. I am truly sorry that the language I used was offensive. I assure you, I do not align dark skin with dirtiness, as has been suggested, nor did I intentionally violate anyone's space as we were two children who collided on a playground. Again, I'm sorry for the way this was heard and for the harm that it caused. It was truly an attempt to give honor to one of my sheros. It's my hope that we can move forward as a learning community where harm is addressed and healing can take place. I am open to hearing from those who were harmed and I'm open to share my regret, hear what healing might look like and put an action plan in place. As recommended, I am in the midst of reading and rereading several of the books suggested and am part of two reading groups where we discuss the content. I am dedicated to the recovery of trust over whatever time it takes and to put in place the steps toward healing as determined by those who were harmed. In the next few weeks, I'll work with the current board directors, consultants and staff to discern our mutual opportunities to learn and grow. My commitment to this community, our students, staff and residents of Tuck Willa has been strengthened through this experience as I learn and grow. I pledge going forward to center the voices of BIPOC persons and continue to explore and challenge the ways white supremacy and power inequities affect the way we work day to day. Our scholars and our community deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Land recognition?
Thank you, Jan. We in the Tuck Willa School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duwamish and Makoshu people, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duwamish and Makoshu tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land and we recognize the Duwamish and Makoshu people who have been living and working here since time immemorial.
Is the approval of the agenda and I'll entertain a motion for approval?
I moved second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, we'll go ahead and move along to the public comment and presentation on the virtual protocols that have been updated. So I believe is Carrie Martin here? Ms. Cor is Debbie, is Carrie Martin here?
I.
She is.
I had to be made a panelist. Hello. Sorry, let me, I'm gonna go to the Tuck Willa School District website real quick and then I'm gonna share my screen. Um, is that okay? Deb, for me to kind of take over sharing the screen?
Absolutely, I gave you co-host ability.
All right. All right, because everyone see that?
Yeah.
Cool. Okay, so the new public comment protocol is going to be on the Tuck Willa School District website and it's on the Board of Directors page. So if you go to tuckwillaschools.org, then go to About Our District and then go to Board of Directors. There is now a new sub-page under here called Public Comment. So if you click on that, there are instructions here for how you can submit public comment. So if you want to submit a written public comment, which is how we have been doing it, so you know, you would send an email or some other, I'll show you the other way you can do it, it will be read at a virtual meeting. So the instructions to do that here are here. It's really no different than how it was before, except instead of emailing at Deb Core directly, you can email publiccomments@tuckwillawednet.edu. And that is actually an email group. So. Yeah, Dr. Herndon receives that, those emails, Deb Core receives those emails and all the members of the school board receive those emails. So just to kind of widen it up a little bit, so more people were seeing the public comments that come in. All of the other sort of. Guidelines still apply, so still submit your public comment noon the day of the school board meeting and it should be no more than 500 words, which is about two pages double spaced. The other way, you can submit a written public comment. If you scroll down a little bit farther on the page, there is a form here as well. So if you feel more comfortable doing it this way, you can do it this way. This can also be translated, so this entire page can be translated, which makes it a little more accessible for some of our multilingual families. So that is another option you have for written public comment. If you want to sign up to do a verbal public comment, over here, there is a form as well that you will fill out. And we will check these as, right before the meeting. And then I think there's another public comment at the end of the meeting. So I think these can be, this can be filled out during the meeting as it happens. Now, because of the way the website is set up, only me and Deb Core have access to see these results. But there still are two people who can go in and see all the responses that are coming in. So if Deb's busy, I'll go in, if I'm at a meeting and go in and check to make sure that all of the comments are being seen. And you will get a confirmation that your, either your public comment has been received or that you have signed up to do a verbal public comment. So if you don't hear anything, that means that nobody has seen it. So you will get something from one of us. If you require translation services, go ahead and fill this out and then we do need 24 hours notice or so we can get a translator in place. Any questions about any of that?
Carrie, I'm, I'm just thinking about tonight, since this is just coming out and people are learning the protocols. Will there be abilities for people to like, as we have like in other meetings, type their names and that they want to do public comment? Not just use the form this evening? Some folks might even just be calling in.
Is the question, during this meeting, could?
Yeah. As we sort of, this is a learning process and there's a lot of just new, new things going on here.
Absolutely. So is the question, could people contact us, different ways to get on sort of the?
Right, what? Yeah, so I guess the link, maybe we can put the link in the chat so people can start accessing, I mean, for those that haven't left this website yet. And then if anyone's having any issues with the link or if anything's happening, maybe for, you know, at least as we start to go through this transition, they can go ahead and put their names in the chat if they want to do public comment.
I, I think that's up to Deb Core, because I, I don't, I don't really have anything to do with that. So we can ask her about that. So.
Chat will be open at public comment time. And as before, if they can raise their hand and put their name in chat so that I can find them, raising of the hand brings them to the top of the list, so they're in a line there.
Thank you, Carrie, for getting that site.
We will also be checking throughout the meeting, the. Website to see if anything else is received.
All right, so before we get started with public comment, since we have a new policy, I wanted to share the policy. I don't know how many folks have had a chance to look at it or read it, so I just wanted to go through it. So the updated policy, Tuck Willa School Board recognizes the value of community input on educational issues and the importance of involving community members in meetings. The board welcomes students and community members to express ideas, concerns and input during regular board meetings, special meetings or, and emergency meetings. May include student and community input comments as outlined in this policy. Written and oral comments will be accepted by the board during the scheduled communication section of, of the meetings. And so similar to what Carrie was sharing, for folks that want to submit a written comment, do so by 12:00. For virtual participants, the online form will be available before and during the meeting and on the board webpage. For participants in person, hopefully someday, right? A signup sheet will also be available in the meeting room. And if not choosing to complete the online form, written comments will be read by the Office of Superintendent Representative. Up to 15 reserved slots for either written or verbal comments will occur at the beginning of the meeting and up to 10 slots are available at the end of a regular scheduled meeting. Written comments will be read for up to three minutes. Verbal statements may be up to three minutes. If there are more participants than reserved slots, a waitlist will be created. And if a participant does not appear when called or decides not to comment, participants will be called from the waitlist after the remainder of reserved slots. At the meeting, community members will be recognized by the board and after identifying themselves may comment within three-minute time period. The president may interrupt or terminate a statement when it's too lengthy, personally directed, abusive or obscene or not relevant. The president may also call a meeting to recess without a vote as necessary and the board may yield additional time to a speaker if requested by a board member. The board as a whole shall have final decision determining the appropriateness of all such rulings. And then in terms, so I'll go ahead and let Debbie go ahead and feel free to get started.
Great, so I have six written comments for tonight and as soon as I'm done reading those, I can go ahead and open up chatter. Dr. Apoa Ryder, would you prefer it be open now?
Go ahead and open now.
Open it now, okay.
Yeah.
It's opened. Okay. The first public comment is. Starts out, "On behalf of Foster High School's Black Student Union, there was a Tuck Willa School District Board meeting that took place on February 8th, 2022, where the school board attempted to honor Black Americans who have made contributions to our society for Black History Month. Director Larson honored Katherine Johnson, a brilliant mathematician for NASA. Director Apoa Ryder honored our local Senator Rosa Franklin and Senator Tewina Noble, the first Black senator to serve in a decade. Director Bowlerjack, we are not exactly sure who she honored or who her personal story highlighted to celebrate Black History Month. It is clear Director Bowlerjack did not recognize anyone but herself. Director Bowlerjack explained, "When I was a little kid, I lived in a pretty segregated town. I didn't know many people of color, but there was one girl with very, very dark skin." Director Bowlerjack tells us that the little girl went to her school. She did not know her ethnicity. She did not know her name. She did not know what her situation was. She touched her skin and realized that her skin was just like mine. This is what changed how Director Bowlerjack saw the world. A long silence proceeded after Director Bowlerjack shared her personal story when she was supposed to be honoring Black Americans on Black History Month. As a leader in an education institute, Director Bowlerjack has plenty of resources to honor Black Americans. We have Black educators in our district who Bowlerjack could have honored and many Black Americans to Google, learn about and celebrate. Director Bowlerjack's personal story was disappointing, but what was even more disappointing was the silence that took place afterwards. Silence shows compliance. The meeting continued as if what was said was acceptable to all in attendance. We ask ourselves, why does this keep happening? From the boardroom to the classroom, why does this keep happening? Why is it acceptable to be silent when our leaders or educators cause harm? Why are they not being held accountable when presented with an opportunity to celebrate or even see Black students and instead only see themselves as they exist in their own world, apart from our Black students, our Black staff and our Black community? What do we have a race, a racial equity team for? Why do we have a board racial equity policy when clearly the board allows I Don't See Color Storytime to take place in a board meeting that is supposed to be honoring Black Americans and a public statement of recognition in the fight against anti-blackness? This incident is not the only incident of its kind taking place in the Tuck Willa School District. This particular incident happened to be recorded and publicly displayed for all to hear upon request. There are others like this, like this one occurring each day and we are tired of the silence and erasure of our names, our identities and our excellence. We invite you, Director Bowlerjack, to see us, to remember our names and authentically learn about our situations in our district. We invite you to meet with us and share how you currently see the world. We would like to know from you, how do you represent us as a school board member or if we even exist in your world? If you do not see us, you cannot represent us. And if you don't represent us, your seat on the board should be yours no more. We would like to recommend some reading to Director Bowlerjack that would educate her on the work she needs to do and hopefully lead to further ongoing learning. How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram X. Kendi. White Fragility, Why is It So Hard for White People to Talk About Racism by Robin D'Angelo. Me and White Supremacy by Leal Afzal. White Tears, Brown Scars, How White Feminism Betrays Women of Color by Ruby Muhammad. Ratchedemic: Re-Imaging Academic Success by Christopher Enden. Any of the numerous additional books, articles, biographies, documentaries, podcasts, films, exhibits, websites, trainings, authentic, community-led conversations and/or events that help further the understanding of the impact of anti-blackness and the erasure of blackness throughout history and into our present day. Respectfully, Kaden Crawford, Kyler Crawford, Catrice Cyphers. The next one starts, "Tuck Willa School District Board Directors and Community. The Latinx and Chicanx staff of Foster High School are uniting and communicating our unwavering support of our Black colleagues, students and community members in their pain, disappointment and frustration in reaction to the recent comments made by Director Jan Bowlerjack at the last school board meeting and stand together in demand of her resignation from her position. On February 8th, 2022, Director Bowlerjack demonstrated a momentual gap in her own racial literacy and a complete lack of sensitivity and awareness of the power of language in her performative presentation of a personal antidote she shared as part of the board's effort to honor and celebrate Black excellence in our history. Director Bowlerjack is unfit to serve the Tuck Willa community if she cannot understand the privilege she holds and wields in her position of power as a white woman and school board member and we are demanding her immediate resignation. In an effort to avoid re-traumatizing our Black community and reliving the moment itself, we will simply state our reasons why Director Bowlerjack's actions merit an immediate resignation from her current position. One, Director Bowlerjack's entire presentation was performative and white-centered and lacked the thoughtfulness, sensitivity and preparation that other board members demonstrated in their own presentations to the community that evening. While other board members' presentations were informative and celebratory of significant Black figures in our history with the purpose of celebrating Black excellence, courage and joy, Director Bowlerjack's antidote centered herself, her own experience and feelings and contributed to the erasure and de-centering of Black celebration and excellence in that moment. Tuck Willa's BIPOC community is weary, frustrated of performative acts and expects our leaders to demonstrate authentic growth in their own racial literacy and intentional centering and uplifting of our Black community in all spaces. Two, Director Bowlerjack shows no real understanding of the disconnect between intent versus impact. She will likely argue that her intentions were in keeping with the board's goals that evening in some way, that she didn't mean to cause harm. But this will just solidify our point of her cluelessness as to how hurtful and inconsiderate her antidote was. Her words in describing an unnamed person with dark, dark skin whom she couldn't even remember and the lack of reflexivity or acknowledgement of how problematic the entire narrative was, even as she was six or seven years old, demonstrates her thoughtlessness and carelessness that caused real harm and pain to our Black community members in that space. She centered herself in that antidote and couldn't even add a reflective segment to the antidote acknowledging her privilege or her commitments to her own learning and growth as a result of the experience she shared. Three, Director Bowlerjack's antidote upholds colorblindness, which goes against our vision as a community to be anti-racist, identity-sustaining and culturally competent. Our BIPOC community does not want to hear that our skin is the same. This statement upholds the erasure and minimization of the pain and struggle of Black and Brown communities and the systemic and institutional racism that exists in this country. Our skin is not the same and if we have to explain that to a board member, then that person cannot represent our community. The child in Director Bowlerjack's antidote was a person with a whole life in dreams and while the director emphasized the impact this person had on her, she could remember buildings better than the human being she was referencing. And while in her mind, the director might believe that highlighting that they had the same skin and that she didn't even know what this child's ethnicity was, shows some sort of racial acceptance. It's in actually showing how little she understands about the struggle, pain and experiences of BIPOC even to this day. We urge the board to avoid viewing this situation as simply an isolated one. How many times have BIPOC been harmed in our schools and district spaces, only for time to pass and for it to be forgotten? What does accountability and healing in the Tuck Willa School District look like moving forward? How do you as leaders and representatives of this community model equity, inclusivity and cultural competence in all your duties? What is it going to take for the board to be a force of change in this district? This continuous harmful cycle diminishes our BIPOC community's soul, efforts and hope. Our BIPOC community is tired of being used to market Tuck Willa as a diverse community, as a place where multiple racial identities, cultures and languages are represented, but then cannot feel valued, honored and celebrated in authentic ways by its own leaders. We ask that Director Bowlerjack step aside and open space for a person who is ready to represent and uplift their community in genuinely positive ways. And we implore that board members listen carefully to Foster's Black Student Union and Black staff and honor their recommendations on how to repair this harm moving forward. Sincerely, Latinx and Chicanx Foster staff and as Aracelis Ramena, George Torres, Andrea Gamboa, Andrew Guerin, Joe Camacho, Guadalupe Mahoney, Diego Nunez, Sylvia Decker-Mora. The next one is from Thornback Race and Equity Committee. Dear board members, this message comes to you today from a place of frustration. At the last board meeting, comments were made that carried anti-black sentiment. As board members each took time to. As board members each took time to research and recognize the achievements and positive impacts of notable black people to share at the beginning of the meeting, one board member's recognition was not that at all. Instead, it was a story of this board member's personal journey centering themselves and thereby their white identity, recognizing their own discovery that people of color are in fact people. There was no naming of any notable black person, there was no honoring of any black person's achievements, no story of the journey or accomplishments of any black person. We, in the audience of these words, did not hear the story of any of the many inspirational black people who made our world, country, state, city, or community a better place. Instead, we heard the story of how a Tukwila School Board Director at a young age learned that dark-skinned people have skin too. We heard that this board director's learning occurred through the accidental violation of touching a dark-skinned person. We heard that this board director had a pivotal moment in their life at the expense of a young, nameless, solitary girl of color who the board director never befriended. In a district as diverse of ours, as diverse as ours, this caused harm, harm to our students, harm to our staff, and harm to our community. To have someone so disconnected from the lives of those they serve, be in a position of power and authority over decisions regarding those same lives, causes harm. In a district as diverse as ours, we need leaders actively working towards an anti-racist climate. We need leaders who do not perpetuate anti-blackness. It is our hope that this wrong will be made right in evidence through work done and accountability measures taken to ensure that we are working towards obtaining an anti-racist Board of Directors that will lead Tukwila into an era that actively seeks to eliminate racial harm caused to the staff, students, and community it serves. Sincerely, Ra- Thornback Race and Equity Committee. The next letter received. To the Tukwila School Board Members and Community, we, the Asian and Pacific Islander Staff of Foster High School, demand a public apology and/or resignation from Director Jan Bowler Jack for her comments about the dark, dark-skinned people on February eighth, twenty twenty-two. We stand together with our fellow c- staff of color and express our support for our black students, colleagues, and community members who were directly harmed by her comment. The impact of Director Bowler Jack's comments reverberated through our buildings and the Tukwila community at large. Many of our colleagues of color expressed anger, frustration, and resentment over the pain from the comments that still lingered heavily on their minds. As a board member of the Tukwila School District, you were el- elected to serve the students, families, and community at large. In a district where over ninety percent of students identify as BIPOC, our leaders must be culturally responsive, respectful, and honor the diversity of the community it serves. Our diversity is not a statistic, it is lived experiences. While Director Bowler Jack's intention may have been different, its impact on our students, colleagues, and community was hurtful. Director Bowler Jack's personal antidote as a white woman with privilege overshadowed the moment of honoring and celebrating black excellence. It was heartbreaking that Director Bowler Jack was unable to honor and celebrate black legacy during Black History Month. Even in naming historical figures past and present, she has failed to name one that has helped impact and reflect on her work in the community. In context, the issue put forward at the board was that black students are not participating in STEM classes due to students' lack of role models. This data point should lead our work towards cultural responsiveness. As staff members, we hope that our leaders can lead by example. The statement made by Director Bowler Jack demonstrated a severe lack of awareness of racial literacy and sensitivity to our students, colleagues, and community experience. Her antidote objectifies her experience down to how the little girl's skin felt like hers, refusing to acknowledge the difference in every aspect of her life, or the privilege that she inherits. Director Bowler Jack gave no thought to what the experience of the dark-skinned person that she ran into would have been, would have been like. To us, Director Bowler Jack's inability to reflect on this childhood experience with a more informed perspective shows a lack of awareness in any genuine attempt towards racial equity or cultural responsiveness. We are curious and disappointed as to why no one addressed the harm being done at that very moment. Regardless, it is clear that there is a need for courageous leaders to step up now and take appropriate, authentic, restorative action. We, the Asian and Pacific Islander Staff at Foster High School, asked the board, asked that the board address the matter and provide communication about the restorative actions taken to repair the harm done to our students, colleagues, and community members by Friday, March fourth. In solidarity, Asian and Pacific Islander Staff of Foster High School. And it was signed Alex Crawford, Eric Hall, Maria Ibrahim, Khan by, Khan B. Lee, uh, Hong Yan Newton, Anthony Pascal, Myleene Patton, Kevin Patrapp, Shay Serino, Myla Sang, Jordan Wong, and Sabrina Yard. I have two more. Good evening, my name is Angela Meyer, and I am the Office Manager at Cascade View Elementary. Director Bowler Jack has been silent regarding her racist remarks made at the February eighth board meeting, and her continued silence is resonating loudly with our students, staff, and community. It says that she doesn't care about the hurt she has caused. It says that she doesn't take accountability for the trauma she exposed our community to. Because she missed the February twenty-second meeting, she wasn't able to hear the statement made by Dr. Apoa Ryder. She didn't hear the hurt and trauma she caused. She didn't hear her breakdown in tears because of the way she has been treated by her fellow board members. She didn't hear the anger and sadness she feels because of the racism that she has experienced and continues to experience. And most of all, she didn't hear the resiliency and the fierce determination from Dr. Apoa Ryder and Director Hoover to be the catalyst in working to stomp out the rampant racism in the district. Director Bowler Jack must be held accountable for her actions. She must step down and resign her position tonight. Sadly, we also learned that the exact voices we needed to hear were once again silenced. Public comments were admitted from the Foster High School Black Student Union, the Foster High School Black, Latinx, and Tukonex teachers, and the Thornback Race and Equity Team. When will this district stop inflicting hurt and trauma on our BIPOC staff and students? The district had a chance to step up to the plate and accept responsibility for this oversight, but instead chose to place the blame on Google. In the almost three years since students and staff from Foster bravely confronted the board regarding the racism they have been subjected to, there is a question that still needs answered. Were the students and staff that participated in the abhorrent racism towards our BIPOC students and staff disciplined or reprimanded? The community deserves answers, and most of all, our students and staff that were subjected to this disgusting behavior need answers. Students and staff and of color are treated much differently than their white counterparts in this district, and until the systemic racism is dealt with by the district administration, we are going to continue to lose talented staff. It seems as though there are some in district administration that would rather bury their heads in the sand and hope it all goes away instead of confronting this problem head-on. We could have race and equity meetings every day, but that does not solve the problem. Our educators of color continue to be demoralized and dehumanized. They are painted as being angry, hostile, and not to be taken seriously. They are spoken to with condescending tones and told to sit down, be quiet, and do as they are told. Our district leaders need to be held accountable. Those that continue to perpetuate the racism in our schools need to be held accountable. As Mary McLeod Batun said, if we accept an acqui- acquisitions, I'm sorry. Acquisitions in the face of discrimination, we accept the responsibility ourselves and allow those responsible to sav their conscience by believing that they have a, our acceptance and concurrence. We should therefore protest openly everything that smacks of discrimination or slander. The district needs to be uncomfortable and held accountable for their inaction. Our students deserve better, our staff deserves better, our community deserves better. I have one last public comment. To whom it may concern, I am writing this note in support of Reverend Jan Bowler Jack. And Jan has been a pillar in the community and a voice for the voiceless for as long as I have known her. She is kind, supportive, and continuously fights for the underdog. I have only known Jan to be fair and honest and to always lead with grace and care. It is unfortunate to see a childhood story taken into the context of such a heavy accusation, but the Jan I know will learn from this experience and be even better than she was before. I do hope things play in her favor. As a community would suffer a great loss not having Reverend Jan in a leadership role, with much respect, Kena Miller, Director of Social Services.
Are there any other public comments that have come in?
There was one, there was one more that came in via email, so I've alerted Miss Cord of that one.
Thank you, I have it right here. This one just came in. It is from Madison Martin. Dear Teachers, being the Ambassador for Equity, I am very disappointed that some of you have not been teaching the W O S lessons. I get it, it's something that you may not want to teach or that you may not be comfortable teaching. But do you see where I'm getting at? It's not all about you. By not teaching us the importance of these issues, as students will never learn, the school gives you the oppor-
Debbie, um, it looks like this, this one is from Maddie Martin, and she asked to read it, so. Don't know if, yeah, I just saw that. Is Matt, is Maddie's hand raised by chance?
It is, I just promoted her to talk.
Hi, um, first I would like to thank all of you for letting me speak today. I was asked by Dr. Ryder and a couple of the teachers from the SMS Race and Equity team to come and share my letter that I wrote for teachers for the Weakest Solidarity. If you don't know, Shaw Walter participates in a week of solidarity to honor the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Um, it's a week to gather as a community to learn and to continue to fight. Dear Teachers, being the Ambassador for Equity, I'm very disappointed that some of you have not been teaching the Weakest Solidarity lessons. I get it, it's something that you may not want to teach, or that you may not be comfortable teaching, but do you see where I'm getting at? It's not all about you. By not teaching us the importance of these issues, as students will never learn, the school gives you the opportunity to provide these students with the resources they may not have access to. Use that to educate others and yourselves while you have the privilege to do so. My point is, we have to learn from the generations before us to really create change. If we stay silent, if we don't unlearn and reteach change and impact, then we can't do anything. Now here is the time to not be selfish. We are the generation that has to fight for change. We're the ones that are organizing walkouts, standing and marching in protest, and fighting for equal rights. Look at how much we can do without you, but with you, we can do so much more. With not only your support, but your teaching as well, all of us can aid for social change. The purpose of Weakest Solidarity is to get students to acknowledge the stuff, the suffering that came before us, so that when it comes to our turn in line, we are ready to take off and fight against anything that comes our way. By teaching us all of these things, all of the parts, and even the bad, it helps to create a wonderful future for us all. I would like if you please take my letter into consideration. I will not ask you to agree with me, nor will I ask you to like my opinion either. All I ask is that you read it with careful consideration. Sincerely, Maddie. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. All right. Any others before you move on? We'll go ahead and shift into the reports. First is the Race and Equity update with Dr. Herndon.
Good evening, uh, thank you Board Directors, uh, staff, community, and students. I appreciate, uh, everybody participating this evening and uh, sharing their public comments and, and reflections. It does, does mean a lot, and I hope people continue to do that. Um, around the race and equity updates, a couple of the main items that we have uh, happening, uh, one, number one is our strategic, um, direction and plan for the school district. We're getting ready to have some active listening sessions, uh, with our provider who is helping us with that information, so there'll be some, uh, sessions for students, for staff, uh, community, uh, we'll have several different opportunities for people to participate with some intentional outreach as well, so there's no limit to the number of people who can participate in these pieces and given the, a lot of the feedback that we have and, and what we're trying to, uh, where we're trying to get better as a district, we know that race and equity issues are first and foremost, and a lot of uh, the minds that people have in the direction in which we need to continue to improve, so um, having that feedback on how it looks, um, what the expectations would be, uh, what some of those metrics may be, uh, in our strategic plan. Uh, it's gonna be really important to get that feedback, so, um, taking all of the pieces that we already have, I think hearing the voices of people directly is gonna be important, so that's why we're intentionally reaching out to each of those groups. Uh, the scheduling for that is currently happening, um, so we don't have dates yet, but that's uh, the scheduling of those events is gonna be happening over the next few weeks, so we'll make sure once we've reached out to, uh, folks to consider the timing dates, um, we're trying to eliminate as many conflicts as possible, but we do realize that, you know, it's possible that timing of some things might conflict with other events that are going on. So we're trying to be as intentional as possible. Uh, that also applies to other listening sessions that we have out there. Uh, we currently are also working, uh, through the budgeting process. That's another piece where, where applying the race and equity lens to what a budget looks like for next year. Uh, there's a lot of consideration as to what that might be, other impacts that we might have. How do we prioritize, uh, what we're trying to, uh, budget is all extremely important. So that feedback also is important to have. Um, and then the, you know, we had some mention about, uh, also our racing equity teams in buildings. I know we've had, uh, some meetings on that, we're trying to make sure that we just have better coordination, participation. Um, and that's true, uh, in, in pretty, in most of the buildings, I know some of the buildings are doing outstanding work, most of the buildings are doing outstanding work, so we just wanna make sure that we're getting, uh, letting people know about the work that's happening and where additional assistance is gonna be needed, where additional support is needed, so that, again, we're, we're all moving in the same direction. Um, have the expectation and support in place to assist students and staff and parents as much as possible. So that's what I have on the race and equity updates for right now.
So, we can move into the COVID nineteen date, so Dr. Herndon and Ms. Maestro?
Yeah, so I'll give some of the updates on this one as well. Um, as you know, a couple of weeks ago, the governor had made a statement about some changes in COVID nineteen policy, and, you know, late last night or early, early this morning, the State Department of Health, uh, updated their guidelines as far as requirements and, um, options are for school districts. So, we're currently going over that, uh, there was a statewide webinar today at about two o'clock with State Department of Health and the State Superintendent to review those changes. They do make reference to, uh, local health jurisdictions, so that would be King County Department of Health. I spoke briefly with them this afternoon to understand where their guidelines- I spoke briefly with them this afternoon to understand where their guidelines may be coming out or if they're very different. And they're expecting to release their updated guidelines tomorrow. So I am reaching out just to make sure that there aren't very many differences between what the state is saying, suggesting, requiring, and what King County might. They do, in the guidelines, leave open those possibilities of a local health jurisdiction making adjustments according to local conditions, so we'll take a look at that. We did put out a statement late last week saying that we would definitely give the updates as to what those change in requirements of COVID updates might be, so we're, we do plan on getting that out in the next day or two as well as it's related to Tuck Willa or King County specifically. That's for the guidelines, as far as everything else. We want to make sure that our P P E supplies are still plentiful, which they are, so if anybody is continuing to have access issues to masks or sanitizer or anything else or tests, please let us know because we do have all of those items available and in stock. That's true for tests as well. The number of cases that we have are definitely down, not only within the community, but within the schools, so we do continue to track that, you know, there are some people who still, you know, might be out on quarantine, so we're wanting to make sure that those folks are well supported and have everything they need to stay connected. So we do have some updates that will be coming later in the week, like I said, in the next day or two, so I'll be touching base with folks in the next couple of days as far as COVID nineteen goes.
And we'll move on to legislative updates with Director Larson.
Thank you, so the legislature is coming to the end of their session. It's supposed to end this Thursday, and it looks like it will end on time. We always have to wait a little bit after session ends to determine exactly all the impacts because the governor has a couple of weeks to potentially veto things that have been passed and then it takes two, three weeks for the, you know, particularly O S P I, a lot of the bills that get passed aren't totally clear and exactly how they'll be implemented, O S P I determines, so it takes another month or so before we get the full impact, but there's a lot of good promising things that look like they're going to get through this session. The first one is the addition of more funding for nurses, social workers, counselors, and psychologists. And also there was some recent addition for parent involvement coordinators, which would be a great news for us because that means we could have some of our family liaisons or community liaisons funded, which would be out of the state, which would be great. The kind of not so great news is that it's, it's going to be phased in over about three years. So there's going to be, you know, about three quarters of a nurse, so F D, nurses per school, but over three years, social workers, another quarter of an F D. Counselors, half an F D, but we also may get another half on top of that for the high poverty schools, which all of those are, ours are, so, so anyway, there's some positive, at least there's moving in the, in the right direction on all those, so we should get some significantly more funding. I would have liked to have seen it upfront, but over three years is what looked like what's going to get through, we'll see in the end of the time, but as far as the, what's called enrollment stabilization, that is funding for enrollment decline, which we along with most school districts had this, this last couple of years. There was going to be funding to kind of continue at the nineteen, twenty nineteen enrollment levels. It looks like we may get about fifty percent of that, not the whole thing, but at least some to help out making up for the enrollment decline until hopefully we get more farther through COVID and more students will be coming back. The, the transportation allocation, there's the bill which looks like it's going to get through to over the next couple of years, provide more funding for the special education fund, transportation and McKinney Vento or students experiencing homeless transportation. So that would be good for us. Also, it looks like what's going to get through is a bill that would fifty seven ninety-three, which will allow school districts to provide some stipends for low income member, community members to participate in some of the boards and committees, this is up to two hundred dollars, so that will be really helpful for us. Another one is eleven fifty-three, which is called the language access bill, which is going to provide potentially about half an F D, a person to implement better language access, so more infrastructure, we talked about it in the, in the budget priorities as kind of developing a language infrastructure so that we can better engage our community members where English is not their first language. We also have twenty seventy-eight, which is some grants for outdoor education programs for fifth and sixth graders, so this would help fund our Osprey camp for our fifth graders, so they wouldn't have to take that money out of the local levy dollars and could use that for some other purposes. Another interesting positive one that I think hopefully will come out well is that House Bill eighteen seventy-eight, which requires schools with over forty percent free introduced lunch students to provide meals to all students starting in twenty-two, twenty-three, so that would be all of our schools and the state would fund that. We have been reluctant to get involved in this program called Community Eligibility Program before because the issue was how do we determine our free introduced lunch percentage for other programs that depend on that, like the Learning Assistance Program and the National Board Certification Program. And there are bills written to allow us to use our current free introduced lunch percentage and continue that forward for several years, which would be really helpful, and so this would be really nice because it will allow us not to have to keep track of students who may not be paying for meals or all that kind of, and just keeping track of a little system, so this would be really, I think, a really good thing. I'll have to check and make sure how it gets rolled out properly, but it really looks like a good benefit for this district and our students. And the last thing I just wanted to mention briefly, I did have a good meeting with the city about a couple of the safe routes to school issues that we had talked about, so it turns out on South Hundred Fifty-Second Street between interurban and South Forty-Second, which currently that's a, that's a walking area for students going to Thorndike that has no sidewalks, it turns out that the city has secured grants to fund that those sidewalks, so that's in process, hopefully in the next couple of years that'll be in place. And we agreed to, on the South Hundred Forty-First Street Bridge, the city, that is on their list of things to get upgraded, a couple of years, a few years ago, they submitted a request to the, or a grant request to the application to the the federal government for that, they did not get it at that time, however, they did have an estimate for it, so when I brought up the idea that we should maybe go to the state with that, they were very open to that, and so we'll be getting an updated estimate about how much it costs and submit it to the state and through our representative Hackney's office, and hopefully we can get that at that level, so that's my report, unless there's any questions, thanks.
Thank you, Director Larson, we'll go ahead and move along. I'll entertain a motion to the approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the February eighth regular board meeting, February nineteenth special Saturday meeting, February twenty-second board work session, and February twenty-second regular board meeting. Any discussions, corrections, anything there? All in favor?
I.
Just a quick moment, I see we have our student representative, Mr. Phi Apito here, so I'm going to bring him in to the panelist side. I think, yes, there he is.
Welcome, Mr. Phi Apito.
Hello.
All right. And so all in favor? Do we, I heard, I heard three, okay, any opposed, all right, passes. We'll move along to the board question only presentations. Any questions, comments for early learning update?
Yeah, I just had one question, and this doesn't need to be answered right now, but I'm curious as to if we have any idea what percentage of students in our, in our district area, preschool students have access to high quality early learning program, I think, ask that question, and I guess we didn't really have, don't really know that, the reason I'm, I'm just interested in trying to get some idea about over, over the long term, early learning, of course, is one of our priorities and getting it available to everybody, so just having some idea about, you know, are we getting close to it, are we still far away from it? Like I say, we don't need, I don't need it right now, but just to think about that would be helpful.
Yeah, it's a good question because it also does let us know whether or not the number of offerings, you know, classroom slots we have available is even approaching that, so it can be a little challenging, it's obviously a little bit easier if the preschool age students are, are for instance, the sibling of students already attending, because then we know, but it's also, you know, there are plenty of families who don't have any students yet, K twelve, so that's going to be a little, little bit more of a challenge to identify, but it's an important thing to do for sure.
All right, any questions for food services update?
I don't have any question, I just wanted to thank all the food services workers, I mean, I remember when COVID started, one of the first issues was how to get food out to the students and I remember our food services group stepping up really quickly with that, and so I just want to say thank you to all the food services workers for all their, all their work through this, been obviously challenging, been a lot of, they've gone through a lot of changes and how the, the food needed to be delivered, so thank you to all of them for their hard work.
All right, we'll move along to summer school update. Food twenty-two, twenty-three.
Just a quick comment on that one. It would be great as our CFO, Chris Birdsong, goes through and does this, if we can kind of record the various community groups that that she meets with, that would be helpful to, just so we know it wasn't listed specifically on the, on the criteria, and I know she's doing that kind of work, and so it would be great as we go through and get to the, toward the end of reviewing the budget to, to know which, which groups have been contacted and what came out of those, so that's just a just a comment for the future, thanks.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and move along to action items. And before we get started with motions, just want to make sure that we are incorporating Representative Phi Apito's voice into decisions being made by the board, and so after a motion and a second, when it's time for discussion, we'll make sure that we check in with Mr. Phi Apito in terms if there's agreement or there's concerns, anything like that before the board votes, all right? So we'll go ahead and try this, I'll take a motion for approval of the human service, human resources staffing report.
So moved.
Second.
So now this would be discussion, and so Mr. Phi Apito, do you have any input or anything you'd like to share on this one before we vote? The board members vote.
Um, no ma'am.
All right, so all in favor?
I, I.
Any opposed? All right, it's been approved unanimously, and we'll, we'll go ahead and do this again to make sure we get your input, Mr. Phi Apito, before the board members vote, ready? Approve, so I'll take a motion for approval of the board budget priorities.
So moved.
Any discussion on these?
No ma'am.
All in favor?
Hi.
I.
I.
All right. So this is also unanimously, or our, I want to make sure I didn't miss any opposed? No, all right. We'll then go ahead and move along to the end of the meeting public comment. Do we have any people that have signed up for a public comment at the end of the night?
We do have one more written comment that was received during the meeting, I'd like to read that now if that's okay.
Thank you, Debbie.
Yes. This is from Kristin Theobald. Dear members of the board, at the last school board meeting, members of the white staff submitted a letter for public comment. In this letter, they vehemently asked for Director Boulderjack's resignation. Their letter was the only one from Foster High School that was read, despite there having been other letters submitted that were asking for a similar action. It seems that Director Boulderjack, you have no intention of resigning. I ask that you reconsider this. Perhaps after hearing some of the other letters tonight that were not read at the last board meeting, it will be clearer the harm that was caused to the community with your antidote. To choose not to resign is to prioritize your feelings over the trauma of those you hurt, which is a symptom of white supremacy. Perhaps you could have saved face and tried to repair some of the harm that was caused if you had acknowledged and apologized as soon as you were aware that that is what you had done. To have gone a month without so much as acknowledging the harm you have done, let alone apologizing is unforgivable. Continuing in this position is a slap in the face to those who have been harmed and shows you still don't understand the severity of the fallout from your actions. If black lives truly matter to the Tuck Willa School District School Board, Director Boulderjack will resign from this position. You cannot serve this community in a position of power while you continue to cause harm to its members. You cannot continue to serve this community when so much trust has been destroyed. It is time to step aside and continue to work on yourself.
And seeing tonight, we do not have the executive session, we'll go ahead and motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for tonight, we'll go ahead and close out, have a good evening, and Mr. Phi Apito, would you be able to stick around on Zoom for just a short while?
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Good night, everyone. Debbie, is it okay, or if we're able to just stay on the meeting once everyone else is exiting? I just need to check in with Mr. Phi Apito real quick.
Absolutely, um, let me stop the recording. I'll also stop the share.